Call the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order. Call a roll, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Cahoon. Mr. Monk.
There.
Mr. Walker here. Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. McFadden. And Ms. Walker.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where the citizens can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you stand, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your statements or inquiries. Also be mindful that you may not receive a particular response to your inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I request you to address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments.
Your name and board. 262 Cambridge Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I come today as a business owner. I've been a business owner in this district for almost 21 years now. And I've always supported this school, whether I was involved, not involved. My kids was educated here, my wife was educated here, and I actually brought my nephew up here. He was educated here. The union president put out a back call, said that, and she's involved with the HVAC program, that I believe our kids are going to be going up to Lansing for a competition. So, and as a clothing store owner, I'm always been in the business of when you look good, you feel good, you work good, and hopefully they'll bring home that trophy. So what I would like to do, so she put out the call, so what I'm doing is that I'm donating these shirts. And I want to, they asked for T-shirts. I'm like, nah, I ain't going for no T-shirt. We gonna make them look real good. So they got the gray, Mount Clemens, and each one of the students have their name on it, and they also have HVAC on the back. So they gonna look real good, okay? I'll give these to the president of the union and hopefully the kids will do well up there.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monk.
We appreciate that.
Last call, citizens' comments. Hearing or seeing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, item five, board presentation. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening. Good evening. We have a special presentation tonight, some more positive things happening. And I'll bring up Mrs. Brooks, one of our second grade teachers, and Mr. Femminio.
Femminio.
Femminio. I kill it every time.
Femminio.
Yes, sir. And I'm gonna turn it over to them, and then I'll come back when they're done presenting.
Well, thank you very much. I've been a business owner here in Mount Clemens for, since 2003, and I'm proud to be part of this community. I'm proud to be part of the next generation for the children that are coming up, the young adults that are coming up, and I'm just proud to be part of this community. And for the second time now, I'm going to be providing, I have provided, every man, woman, and child a sweatshirt that they can use as a symbol of their school spirit, okay? And to me, it's a symbol of school spirit, it's a symbol of unity. It's, it makes me feel, and it makes, hopefully it makes the kids feel like they're part of something special. And it gives myself and my wife great joy to provide this to these children. We went over to Seminole with Ms. Brooks and handed out some more sweatshirts. This is our second time around because we just had to fill in the gaps. And I swear, there was 20% of the kids were wearing those sweatshirts. And I see kids in the community wearing the sweatshirts, and they look uniform, they look snazzy. I think the best part about this year's sweatshirts was the fact that Ms. Brooks and Mr. Roper, we all played a part in asking the kids how they want the sweatshirts to look this time around. Last time it was gray, this time it's red, and I'm seeing so many more. So I'm really happy to provide these sweatshirts to the kids, and I hope it provides school unity to them. And I didn't want you guys to feel out of place, so I brought sweatshirts for the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And if you ordered a large, you got an extra large because we were running out of the largest. So they'll shrink a little bit, so.
No problem, to me, I grew into it.
Thank you.
I just want to add, if I can, yeah, lead it here. I just want to add how much we appreciate, first of all, Ms. Brooks has took this on early in the year. You know, you were communicating, she was communicating with me, and there was so much going on. And she finally said, "Mr. Roper, you mind if I just handle this?" I said, "Absolutely, thank you." So not just for our kids, our entire district staff, especially on Fridays for our staff. This is like the uniform. And the school spirit and pride, the history, the family, the legacy that a hoodie can bring, is so impactful. I don't know that you really understand the sense of belonging, to your point, for all of us that it brings, and the pride that it brings. So we really appreciate this. Our kids, you can go to the elementary any day, and it will blow your minds. Even the kindergartners, the preschool, the littlest kids in a big one, like a dress almost, but they're wearing them daily, and the pride just makes me very proud. I have two, I stole one from Mrs. L, she doesn't know that. But it's part of our uniform, so we really appreciate you and your family for making this happen for us and all the other things that we have talked about potentially, you know, looking at doing in the future as well, so.
And I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Brooks as well. She really took the bull by the horns, and she gave us lists and lists and lists, and really coordinated with us, did all the passing out. And one of the visions that I had for this is that if a team, whether it's a basketball team, or if it's a track team, or whatever team it is, or a football team, if they don't have something that they all have, then maybe they could each put on the hoodie when they get off the bus, or they get on the bus, so that everyone looks uniform. And when, like Mr. Monk said, if you look good, you do good, you feel good, you know? So that to me is something that I'm so proud of, and so my wife and I are so happy to be providing.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for very much for having me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, action item, item six, expulsion hearing. Six A, student 31, 38. Six B, student 72, 27, 92. Mr. Superintendent.
Yep, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. McNeely.
For that hearing, the parent has requested in writing to have a closed hearing.
For both students or one?
They're, both of them have requested separately, yes.
So far, it looks like one family showed up?
Correct, yes.
The chair, the recommendation for the request from the parent was to have the expulsion hearing in closed session. The board would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of expulsion hearing.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education goes into closed session for the purpose of student 31, 38, and student 27, 92.
I don't know which one is what. Well, we can do them both.
Yeah. That's why I said both of them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The first one on the list is the family that's here.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Second by Dr. McFadden. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the motion on the floor, which is to go into closed session for the purpose of expulsion hearing? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. The board is going into closed session. At 6:40. Chair would entertain a motion, the chair would entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Mr. President, I move that we come out of closed session at 8:11 PM.
Support.
Move by Member Monk to come out of closed session, second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to come out of closed session? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The board is out of closed session at 8:11. What is the disposition on the board regarding action item six, expulsion hearings?
Mr. President, I move for a long-term suspension for student 31, 38 for the rest of the school year, which includes 57 days according to policy 57 to 72.
It's moved by Member Monk for a long-term suspension to student 31, 38 according to board policy. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor for long-term suspension to student 31, 38? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. What is the board's disposition regarding student B, 27, 92?
Mr. President, I make a motion to have student 27, 92 permanent expulsion according to policy 1662 in Michigan Code 380.1311A.
Support.
Move by Member Monk to permanently suspend student 27, 92, second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, item seven, consent agenda. Under item seven tonight, seven A, approval of minutes, A1, April 10th, 2024, committee of the whole workshop. Item A2, March 20th, 2024, regular meeting. Chair would entertain, oh, excuse me, and item seven B, approval of bills for payment. B1, March bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Cahoon?
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight, business committee. Eight, one, A, student recruitment marketing mix. Mr. Superintendent.
Sorry, I lost my place, hold on one second.
Eight A. Student recruitment marketing mix.
Mr. Lavender? Is that?
I'll take it.
That marketing mix threw me off.
I'm just reading the agenda.
We're bringing to you for board approval for a purchase that's over $5,000. It's a nine-week schedule for recruitment. There'll be radio slots, streaming commercials, heard by listeners on mobile devices, in-studio recording time. Two of the nine weeks fall this school year and is $8,000. That's already in this year's budget, and the remaining seven weeks fall into next school year.
This is something that we brought to you, the workshop, that you remember. First, the finance committee, and then the board workshop, and this is the marketing company that we used last year, which seems to have had an impact on our enrollment, our positive enrollment numbers. So we're looking to be a little more proactive and do some more ahead of time over the summer recruitment.
Mr. President, I move to approve the student recruitment marketing mix.
Support.
Move by Dr. McFadden to approve the student recruitment marketing mix. Excuse me, second by Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hopefully this outreach pays off as well or better as it did last year because we did have a spike in enrollment last year for the first time in five or six years, or even longer. So hopefully this continues to pay off for us in terms of recruitment and bringing kids, students back to Mount Clemens.
Absolutely.
And per our discussion, you're gonna be putting in that questionnaire where it's being tracked from, right? So that, so that way you have obviously the data for next year.
We are, it's already done, and there was some things already in there, but we clarified it more after our meeting.
Great.
So within our enrollment application, there's the information, the questions that we can gather, what drew them to us, whether it was the, so we can know the impact of our marketing strategies to see if that's what we want to continue to do and have that data to drive our decisions.
Perfect.
Any other additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve the student recruitment marketing mix? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight B, disposition of King Academy.
Ms. Dawes?
We're bringing to the board, recommending the approval of the purchase agreement for disposition of King Academy with Macomb ISD as presented at the workshop. It's been something that we've been talking about for over a year, and the ISD will have a new home for the special programs and continuing providing services to the community.
Chair would entertain a motion relative, you've heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight B, disposition of King Academy.
I will move that.
Move by Member Cahoon to support the recommendation of the purchase of King Academy by Macomb ISD.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I would like to just make a comment, you know, I, you know, this is really for the public. I think this is just a great win-win situation for Mount Clemens. It's not like we are, one, we get a building off our books. We get some money for the building, which we can use for other capital improvements inside our district. But also, we get the ISD in our backyard, you know what I'm saying? I think that's a great thing for us to have the ISD in our backyard with the programs that they're gonna be offering. A lot of our community uses the program, but they gotta travel over to the ISD, so I'm pretty sure when it all settles, you know, maybe they, you know, they won't have to travel way over on Garfield, they can just go right over here, and it's right here. So I think it's a win-win situation for us and ISD.
Agreed.
Additional questions or comments?
I'm just gonna add on to Mr. Monk that, you know, the other part of that is we have that right to refusal. So if at any point the ISD decides that they want to sell it, Mount Clemens Public Schools has that ability to purchase that building before anything, so. It's, I think that's a crucial piece.
And that was, as you know, that was a deal breaker for us because we want the ability to,
Right.
if we, if we need to, to expand or have that back, so.
Yep.
I think it's also important, you know, for transparency with the public. This is just our vote, and it does have to go to the ISD for vote. So this is not, we make this vote and it's over. It does still need to go to them for discussion and vote.
I like to piggyback on Mr. Monk's comments that this is a win-win for both the district, the community, and the ISD. A lot of our families take advantage of ISD programs. In the past, you know, we've had public comments come and say about the ISD, gonna take it and turn it into a charter, or turn it to this, or sell it. The ISD, over the years, has been an invaluable partner to the Mount Clemens Community School District, providing us many different types of resources and help, sometime, off time, without being, they weren't charging us for those services, particularly when we were in a hard place because ISD wants to see our district succeed. So again, I concur, this is a win-win situation for the school district, the community, and the ISD, and the students that are served by the, the population of students that are served by those programs. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight C, crisis prevention. Mr. Superintendent.
Ms. Dawes?
It's recommended that the board approve the crisis prevention quote as presented, which is over $5,000. It will be funded by Title II, and it will be a course for two of our employees to take, and they will become trainers for the nonviolent training that's mandatory for staff.
You've heard the recommendation.
Mr. President?
Dr. McFadden?
I move to, I move to approve the crisis prevention.
Move by Dr. McFadden to approve the crisis prevention, training of the trainers.
Support.
Second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Yes, I want to make sure it's known in the public that this is a mandatory process we got for our employees, and these individuals are becoming trainers to train the rest of the staff. So it's an investment that turns back into the district.
We no longer have to, once our trainers are trained, they can train other staff without us having to go to the ISD at a cost of $45 or $50 per person for that training. So again, this is a win-win for our staff and the district. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item nine, human resources, nine A, layoffs. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Lavender?
The Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of the following layoffs for the 24-25 school year. STEM teacher, Seminole Academy; Spanish social studies teacher, Mount Clemens Secondary Complex; behavior interventionist, Seminole Academy; mental health counselor, Mount Clemens Secondary Complex; media center specialist, Seminole Academy. Each individual noted above received a consideration of a layoff letter and had individual meetings with building and district administration to discuss their potential layoff. The intent of these meetings are to provide transparency and timeliness so these individuals could know what to expect and plan for their employment for the following school year. During the summer of 2023, the Mount Clemens Community Schools held a budget deficit of approximately $2.4 million. As a result of increased enrollment and prudent planning and spending decisions, the current budget deficit is approximately $1.6 million. In order to continue this trend and minimize the deficit to zero and then into a positive, reductions to staff must occur. In the fall of 2023, through the superintendent's evaluation process, the Board of Education approved the superintendent's goals to include rightsizing the district's staff under goal Area III, financial stability. Administrative Guidelines for Board Policy 3131, Certified Teaching Staff Reduction and Retention, states the following. This administrative guideline applies to personnel decisions for teachers as defined in the Teachers' Tenure Act involving a staffing or program reduction or any other personnel determination resulting in the elimination of a position. A recall from a staffing or program reduction or any other personnel determination resulting in the elimination of a position. Hiring after a staffing or program reduction or any other personnel determination resulting in the elimination of a position. The components of this administrative guideline that aligns with the decisions to recommend these layoffs are, when it is determined by the Board of Education that it is necessary to conduct a staffing and/or program reduction or any other personnel determination that results in the elimination of a position, said staffing decisions shall be based on retaining effective teachers. Teacher effectiveness shall be based upon the year-end performance evaluation as conducted pursuant to the administrative regulation, Teacher Evaluation. Whenever possible, notice of discontinuance of service shall be given to teachers affected by reductions in personnel and/or programs before the end of the school year preceding the year in which the discontinuance of service shall become effective. Nothing in this administrative regulation precludes the district from making reductions in personnel or programs at any time. Personnel decisions under this administrative guideline, including layoff and recall, shall be made on the basis of the best interest of the district as well as the certification, qualifications, and effectiveness of each respective teacher. Certification shall be defined as that term is defined by the state law in the Michigan Department of Education. Qualifications shall be defined to include, but not limited to, an individual's areas of certification, level of degree attained, type of degree attained, relevant previous experience, grade level and relevant experience, relevant classes or training, previous ratings, effectiveness, and overall performance as a teacher, previous disciplinary history, or any further factors stated in these regulations which places conditions upon decisions regarding reduction in staff or recall. The rightsizing of staff is in the best interest of the district in order to improve the district's financial stability. The decisions to lay off these individuals follow the Administrative Guidelines for Board Policy 3131 and are based on budgetary considerations, economic needs, certification, evaluation effectiveness rating, and align with the superintendent's goals. The Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of layoffs for the 24-25 school year as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation for agenda item nine A, layoffs.
I'll move that.
Support.
Move by Member Cahoon, second by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? I like to say that one of the hardest things for me as a board member is laying off people because that impacts people's lives, their family's lives. But we're in a situation where we're overstaffed, and we've been kicking the can down the road for three or four years where we didn't lay off staff and we were under a declining enrollment environment, and yet we didn't right-size or adjust our staff, our professional staff to meet the needs of our students. And so this is a move that we're proposing to do that will put us in the direction to start to right-size the district financially and otherwise. Again, it's something we don't take lightly, it's something that we don't want to do, but it's for, but of good. but it's for, for the, but of good, of the totality of the school district. And I hope at some point in time that we, you know, are in a position where we can bring these people back if they're still available because of, because of our enrollment and our, and our financial position.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
You took some of my words out of my mouth, but I just want to reiterate that for the public and for, for everyone. And I've said this multiple times in different formats. This is very tough decisions, you know, a very tough decision that we have to make that's in the best interest of the organization. But like you said, Board President, we don't take it lightly, and we're very empathetic as a staff and as an administration, and understand that this can potentially impact people's lives. But it's necessary for the organization. It's never ideal. We love all of our employees and our staff members. We want to keep everybody here, but to your point, you charged me with the task to do the right thing for the organization, and we can no longer afford to place blame on the past person and keep, continue to do the same thing, right? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. And with the data, using the data to make the decisions that we make, looking at our financial situation, looking at our, our student achievement, to continue to do the same things with the declining of multiple components within our, our system, academics and different things like that. The more money that we, the more finances that we use prudently and correctly and efficiently, the better quality that we can, programming that we can provide to this community. And this is just the first steps in that. And to your point, hopefully, at some point, as we continue, I see this in my head. I see my, my goal and my hope is that to see enrollment go up and these things kind of meet at the same place, and we are fiscally sound and, and have a budget that's sustainable, that's in the best interest of, of everybody involved, so. And, and we've had these conversations with our, our union, they know these aren't tough. And it was important for us to make sure that everyone knew what to expect, right? I have a family, you know, I, I go to work every day to provide as well, and so I thought it would be ethically correct and appropriate to give people the, an extended amount of time to plan for their futures in the event that these things happen, so. I want to make that clear. This is, this is not a happy day to have to do this, but it's necessary, and, and that's what I've been charged to do, so. We appreciate all of those people being affected. We wish them all well, and we're still here. And to your point again, any, with the hopes that maybe one day, if it, if it works, we have opportunities for people to come back, so, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I just want to make sure that it's clear because what this lavender read was so lengthy, but it was well-read. We didn't just pick somebody out the hat and tell them to go home or anything like that. We followed the criteria of effective evaluations, financial stability, and the state mandate requirement for certifications. So those are a lot of the reasons why these things taking place, but those are good reasons.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
I just, I want to make sure that people don't let the increase in enrollment fool you, fool you because that, there are a lot of things that we still need to take care of here, including our infrastructure and to keep us viable, because sometimes we look at if it's, if the roof is going to collapse, and then it turns into when the roof is going to collapse. We have other things that we really need to take care of so we can stay here as well. I'm excited to see the increase in enrollment trend continue to happen. I'm hoping that now that you've been here for a year, rather than such a short amount of time with the increase in enrollment that we did have, that maybe we can even double that and really start to trend in a great direction.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving the agenda forward, informational items. Item ten, finance, ten A, financial reports. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the financial reports? Ten B, contract listings. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the current contract listings? Hearing and seeing none, takes us to Agenda Item eleven, superintendent's comments. Your time's up already.
All right, I'll try to go quick, I know it's been a long night, but I want to make sure that we, that we, you know, we give credit where credit is due and acknowledge some of the great things that are happening and bring the community up to speed. So I, I have this broken down like I always do by district and building, and so just give you a few updates. First of all, I just want to, I want to start by acknowledging, we had a, one of our high school seniors yesterday was one of only, I miss me really not here, I think it might have been close to 100 students that were acknowledged at the, through the ISD, at the county level for his, his name is Aiden. What is it?
Evans.
Aiden Evans, yeah, we talked about you last night too at the, one of YIS friends. Aiden Evans was acknowledged for his GPA, but not only that, but his outstanding SAT score. And he was one of only, I want to say maybe 90 students in the county, and so we're very proud of him and congratulations to, to Evan. And I hope he keeps up the good work. Moving on, some of, some updates and some things that are happening. I'll start with GSRP, got a lot of dates, so get your pens ready, everybody wants you all to attend to. May 18th, the GSRP is our family engagement night. And there'd be more information, as you know, you know, I can get to you and available on our website. So please check that as well. The book fair is going to be happening again, they got it for a second time all of next week. At the school on Tuesday, they're inviting the community, family, parents to come out. They're going, it's World Book Reading Day, so they're encouraging all families to come out and be a part of that on Tuesday. Few things happening over at Semino, all of our third and fourth grade, all of our third, fourth, and fifth grade students are going to have an opportunity through our Title One funding to attend Wright Museum and explore and a part of their science and history lessons and curriculum and, and standards to learn about some historical factors and things. End of the year acknowledgements are being planned for kindergarten and fifth graders. One of the things that in my past, what we've done, I'm not, I think Dr. McFadden and I, we had some discussion about this, you know, it's a fine line between celebrating too soon and as if we crossed the finish line, but it's something powerful, some type of promotional ceremony or something for our kindergartners and our fifth graders as they transition to those pivotal next levels. So that's being planned over at Semino, we'll keep you updated about that. The Mount Clemens Beautification with Ms. Kiero is, will be planting a tree for Arbor Day with third and fourth graders over at Semino. It was very important for our facilities person, initially they were planned on, they were trying to plant an apple tree, and Jay said, whoa, 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 apples bring bees and all kind of other things that were going to, you know, and so they're going to do a more environmental friendly tree that they're going to be planting. April 30th, Semino Math and Science Night, taking place from 5:00 to 6:30. May 3rd, Semino Skill Day, volunteers are needed and welcome, please see the main office and reach out to our, our administration there if you have any, if you're available to, to be a part of. They definitely won't want to personally invite the board to come out if you can. Also, Semino, through our, one of our grant Seminos is going to receive 239 new Chromebooks. As we know, through COVID, a lot of districts purchase Chrome, purchase Chromebook books, but that technology gets old very fast, and, and so we're happy to be able to provide those to our students and so they can stay current with the technology. At the secondary campus, we want to send a thank you out to the McComb County Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for their pop-up prom shop. They did a pop-up prom shop for our, our young ladies to purchase dress, to buy a dress, accessory, shoes, et cetera, for prom, and it was all free. They had personal shoppers with them that were walking through that process, and we're just very grateful for their, their donations and commitment to Mount Clemens Community Schools. They are also planning a voter, voters registration drive, and more information to come about that. On April 27th, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority will be planting a tree in our courtyard for Arbor Day. And I don't know if you all know this, but I guess this has been going on for years. There's a duck family that lives in our courtyard, comes back twice a year, ducklings hatch, and they're there, and we look in the window and the kids, and everybody loves them, so they're, but unfortunately,
The hawks.
The hawks come in and swoop them up, so this tree, the hope is to help protect the ducklings. This is, this is major for me. Graduation progress, this is one of, this is also embedded in my goals, but more, this has nothing to do with a goal, this has something to do with a mission. Out of our 47, I want to give you an update on our, our graduation progress. Out of our 47 seniors, we're proud to say that as of right now, 43 of them, so that's about 91%. We're looking at, we're very confident are going to walk across that stage and graduate on time in June, so. Let's give a big shout out to the high school staff. We still got to get there, we still got to get there, I know what the parents are thinking. But we're very proud of, of pushing that bar, as you know, some of the, some of the expectations down from the state in the past have been to the low graduation rate, but through the hard work and diligence of the whole team and the high school staff, counselor and principal, that is up in the 90 percentile right now, so we're very grateful and, and pleased about that. End step testing is underway, as you all know. Prom, mark your calendars, May 3rd, May 14th, there's a Teen Success Fest. That is being conducted in partnership with, with our Career and College Success Coach is helping bring that program to us, where our students will have opportunity to entrepreneurship, experience in different career pathways, and, and people will be here to help them and explore and expose them to entrepreneurial opportunities. Senior Penning and Honors Night, Tuesday, May 21st. Seniors Last Days, May 24th. Middle School Field Days, Friday, May 31st, June 7th, Graduation. And exams are June 11th and 12th are half days. Last Day of School for the District is June 12th. Special acknowledgement to one of our, oh, already, already talked about it. Student and Staff Recruiter update, as you know, those are two grant-funded positions that came to us. Our Student and Staff Recruiter is working on a lot of opportunities for our district, developing the transition opportunities for our fifth and eighth graders. So in addition to any promotional type of ceremonies, we think it's important, retention is also a goal I've been charged with, so we think it's very important to try to retain the students that we have. So we're working on how to expose our fifth graders to middle school and have our eighth graders experience high school before the end of the year, so they, you know, can, it does a lot to get them a little more comfortable, but also see what their future may look like, and, and so we're working on developing those. She's also working to, for our Staff Appreciation Week, that begins May 6th through 10th. Enrollment activities include our open house, Back to School Bash, the YMCA on April 20th, and our GSRP graduation on the 12th, Head Start Planning Tours, and pop-up enrollment for Summer 2024. One of the things with our Student and Staff Recruiter that is important for me is that, and, and she's been aggressively going to Head Start programs, meeting with those people about their, their, their potential kindergartners who are, you know, are four years old now, and, and recruiting them. And so we're working on relationships and getting in front of those families to market ourselves and, and tell some of the positive things and, and great opportunities here for kids. So more to come about that as well. We have our community leader recognition, planning is, is underway. When those things are finalized, I'll make sure the community and everyone knows. Marketing and planning is under the way. Obviously, our, our marketing request that you all approved tonight. More to come about that, again, that goes from content creating to social media hits, likes, and, and relevant recruitment strategies for the demographic that we serve, so. We're excited about that, in addition to the radio and, and other things. College and Career Coach, our Girls Mentoring Program was held, our first Girls Mentoring Program was held yesterday for 13 of our eighth graders. They had lunch, they talked about girl things, and I let them have their space, so. We're just excited about empowering our young women and to be great leaders in our community. So that was their first meeting yesterday, and it went really well, and hopefully we, it continues to grow and gain more interest from our students. Building Partners, partnerships with the Michigan Works to establish an employment opportunity, and employment opportunities for our students through enrichment programming. Our Nurse Assistant, Floris Fashion Design, those will be opportunities for our kids that our College and Career Coach is working on solidifying. Some district overall updates. This is another milestone and a proud moment. In the past, we were about 33% compliant with expectations and regulations from, with Students with Disabilities, IEPs, and we're up to 77% now, so. Big shout out to Marty and all of our special education teachers who make sure those IEPs are up to date and on time, and, and we got some room to keep, continue to grow, but from 33% to 77% is pretty big. May 9th is our open house from 6:00 to 7:30. June 12th, again, Last Day of School, August 22nd, Back to School Bash, Strategic Planning, one of my proudest things since I've been here, and we talked about this at our workshop. There's a draft floating around, some people in this room was a part of that process. We have a draft version of our strategic plan that you all charged me to make sure we get done. We have a couple more community groups and partners to, that we need to get eyes on it before we bring a final version to you all for your approval to move forward. So our strategic plan is something that, when I met, when I first got here and I talked to community members, from politicians to, to alumni, one of the things that they were concerned about is that, I don't know what the plan is. What's the, what's the, just the strategic plan? And so we're proud that, you know, to have that draft almost complete, and we're pretty confident by June, we're going to have a finished product, strategic plan that guides us in, in the direction that we're going in, so. Thank you to everybody that participated in that, all the community members over 50 or 60 that came and gave their voice and, and was involved and, and really committed to that grueling process. I apologize. I said this in our workshop meeting, another celebration. We got the, I think a $16,000 grant from, with our partnership with AAA to provide free drivers training for 25 of our seniors, Segment One, Segment Two, and road testing, so you, you know it's important for our kids to, you, you know, you got to have a license to have access sometimes, right? And so we're just excited to be able to send some of our seniors out into the world with that barrier removed, so they can start their lives and, and be successful and, and go on their journeys, right? So sometimes we take for granted and don't realize how many people don't have a driver's license. And if you do some surveying and you find out, all you got to do is look at how much money Uber makes to know how many people don't drive, right? Another celebration, the ISD, we sent myself and several students to, several teachers to the Ron Clark. Ron Clark is a world-renowned educator who started the Ron, Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta, and he's done some work in New York, and their test scores and student achievement and things have been, with, with similar demographics as ours, have, have been through the roof and phenomenal. And so about six of our staff members, teachers and myself were sent to the Huntington Place downtown Detroit, got a chance to hear him present, talk about his methods, with the hopes of looking to learn more, to bring them back and embed them and implement them into our community. One of the exciting things was, normally this happens every year, his presentation at Huntington Place, and they pull, draw a few names out for students, for teachers to go to win a free paid-for experience to go visit his academy in Atlanta in July, two-day. And so they called a couple of names, and after the second or third name, they pulled out a slip and said, wait a minute, what is this? And so over 300 educators from our county, our, our community were granted that opportunity, and we're all going to be, all expenses paid for opportunity to go visit the Ron Clark Academy to professionally develop ourselves, learn, and bring back, with the hopes of applying some of the things or implementing some of the things and experiences for our kids. So we're really excited about that and appreciative for, to the ISD, the MISD, for that opportunity. Another celebration, I guess, for us, is that I've been recruited through the University of South Florida, has a grant called Reach Grant, and it's for a national think tank that's going to take place in Chicago next week, so they reached out, and I've been recruited to represent us and be a part of that national think table in Chicago next week. and it's for a national think tank that's going to take place in Chicago next week. So they reached out and, uh, I've been recruited to represent us and be a part of that National Think Table, um, in Chicago next week. So I'll be eager to bring back what I learned and, and was grateful to be, um, selected to be a part of that opportunity. And, um, again, all of these things just to bring back, um, some experiences for our kids in this community. So those are our updates. I tried to go as quickly as possible. I appreciate everyone and, um, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Moving the agenda forward, item twelve, Board Comments. Ms. Collins.
Um, I'm looking forward to watching how great and how busy, um, our parking lot and our track field is for this track season. Um, I didn't get to make a couple of those last, few, quite a few of those last year because our meetings were on the same night, so I'm hoping I can make it out there and, and enjoy some of the track season. This year's going by fast. It's going to be over before we know it. Um, prom is coming up next month, right, May? So I'm excited for the kids to be able to, to enjoy their senior prom, and graduation is always a nice day. So it'll be here before we know it. Um, other than that, uh, the layoffs are tough. But I see a lot of great, great things. Everybody's working so hard from our superintendent to our administration, especially to our staff, that have been implementing so many new things. So as our enrollment continues to increase, I, I just can't wait to restaff and, and get the right people here and just make it just such a positive environment, and I think we have the right people in place to do that. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm looking forward to turning some track meets this season. It feels great to see the projected graduation numbers from previous numbers. Also looking forward to potentially attending some of the senior events as well, as always. Looking forward to the voter registration drive and helping out with that potentially. And, um, just thank the staff for all that you do and all that you continue to do, wearing many hats, doing a lot of work for a small district like ours, because it takes many hands. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we've been here long, so I'm gonna try to make it. Don't put me on the clock.
I'm here till we shut down.
Uh, first of all, uh, I got a question for the superintendent. Can you take a board member to Chicago? Okay, I know a little, a couple of golf courses we can hit while we there.
This is business trip.
Ah, I knew it. Okay. All right, okay. No problem. Why do I do, do what I do? Um, I do what I do because, you know, back in Detroit, graduating from Murderright High School, um, I had people pour into my life. And when I talked to them, you know, as I got el, older in college, you know, I used to sit down and say, you know, how can I repay you for being such an influence in my life? And every single one of them said to me, pay it forward. And that's why I do what I do. That's why I donate the way I donate. That's why I, you know, get stuff for kids, me and my wife. You know, a lot of people don't know that we brought three kids that graduated from this district in our home, you know, nurtured them from our, from ninth grade. They graduated, went off college, they graduated college. Um, so that's why I do what I do, and that makes me feel good because I've been blessed and my wife and my family's been blessed, um, tremendously. So, you know, we just want to pay that forward. And I encourage anyone out there to, you know, look at what you can do for this district. Everything, every little bit counts. And it don't have to be nothing major, you know, but everything counts, you know, especially I heard with the, you know, with the, with the strategic planning. You know, hopefully, everybody stays engaged and involved with that because it is going to take, you know, all, well, y'all don't call them stakeholders anymore. I forget what y'all call them, but it's going to take everybody. Good luck to the HVA, uh, to the HVAC team. Do us proud up in Lansing. I want to thank, you know, and this goes back to what I said, you know, I want to thank Mr. Feminino and his law firm for just continued support to this district over, I think, what's what, three years running now? Third year? Third year running, so, you know, want to thank him and his law firm, um, for that dedication and support. Uh, Policy Committee, we're going to be meeting, um, we're going to get this thing so we can all get on to the policy, so we will schedule a policy meeting for, uh, next month, early next month. Um, I'm looking forward to our board retreat, um, to kind of get together, brainstorm, you know, get in, in the, we put in, and I'm looking for some good things to come out of that board, that, uh, board retreat at the end of this month. Um, congrats to our student at the ISD for that GP and SAT. We were one out of nineteen?
No, no. In the county, there might have been ninety kids.
Ninety kids. But that's still though, one out of ninety, I mean, that's awesome.
Still within the county, a hundred and something thousand.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's absolutely awesome. Keep up the good work. Encouraged by the, uh, graduation numbers, you know, hopefully we can hit that forty-seven. Uh, but forty-three not bad though. Forty-three not bad, so, um, but keep up the good work. With superintendent you and your team, you know, you guys are doing a great job. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, don't try to do, so, you gotta pace yourself. You know what I'm saying? Because we don't want you getting burned out. You got, you know, you got a lot of stuff to do, so, uh, other than that, Mr. President, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden.
Thank you, sir. Nah, just writing one more. You know what? Big, big problem I have, I start talking, I can do what I'm talking about. Like, as of now. But as, I want to reach out first and say thank you, Mr. Monk, because you have been, uh, a, a nice staple to the district. You have always given, since I've known you, I want to say thank you and I appreciate it. Same thing to, um, Attorney David Feminino. You know, a lot of people do things off their own back without, um, asking to do it, and it, and it's great. There's an old saying that people say, sometimes people use as a catchphrase or mantra, or they use at a party as a tagline, you know, that, that saying, it always takes a village. People say that a lot now because they use it back when, when I was a child. It, it meant something. Nowadays, when they say it takes a village, they're just saying it. They don't really mean it. But some people do step up, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all our board members for doing the same. Our students' performance, I can, congratulations to all of them. We have forty-seven students, forty-three about to graduate. That's a wonderful thing. So our students' performance and the test results, and that student that performed so well, that got recognized by ISD. Those recognitions are what needs to be brought forward because that's what we're here for. That's what we're about. We made some tough decisions tonight, put the layoffs. But like I said, those three things was a criteria. You know, we look at effective evaluations, state mandated required certifications, and we looked at financial stability. And that's all, that's what we're here for as board members. Nothing else. So I, I don't want to say thank you or welcome or, or anything else about that, but all I want to say is what our students are doing, especially white behind that camera, I thank you too, because I know I heard you working what you do. So I appreciate you. Those are my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. McFadden. Not to, um, pour it on too thickly, but, um, kudos and thank you to, uh, Board Member Monk for his unselfish contributions and support, not only monetary, uh, but in other, other ways, him and his wife have been supporters and contribution, computer contributors over many, many years. Even far before, before you got on the board. So, uh, that's much appreciated and much respect go out to you, uh, and, and your wife, uh, for your unselfish, uh, contributions of time and support, uh, to this district. To Attorney David Feminino, uh, and Ms. Brooks. Uh, thank you, Ms. Brooks, for taking the charge and the lead in, uh, putting this, uh, hoodie, uh, program back together, uh, in partnership with Mr. Feminino. And, uh, thank, um, Mr. Feminino, uh, and his law firm for not only the hoodies, but the other activities and, and, uh, programs that they support, uh, here in the district. Um, there's a lot of things that, uh, we can't do without the support of unselfish people, uh, that, as Mr. Monk said, want to, want to give forward. Uh, now, we are, as one, as this board member, we, I really appreciate and, and respect that. Mr. Evans, uh, outstanding, uh, to be recognized out of, uh, a hundred students as, he was number one, you say?
No, no, one of.
One of, on the top, you know, with, um, with an outstanding, uh, SA, SP, uh, the SAT, SAT score and outstanding grade point average. So that, that shoots down all the minutia that we hear, uh, in Mount Clemens that students can't achieve and aren't achieving. Uh, this shows that, um, our students can achieve and are achieving, uh, not just at, when you compare them with students in our, inside our school building, but when you compare them with students outside of our school building, the county, the state, a, and the nation. We're not where we want to be yet, um, but we're, we're trending, uh, in, in the right direction. So all those people, staff, uh, professional teaching staff, support staff, administration, uh, we appreciate, uh, your efforts and your commitment and your dedication to ensuring that our students are provided a world-class, first-class, world-class, uh, quality, free public education here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Good luck to the, um, the, uh, Badland Bathers and Lady Bathers as they, uh, begin their track season. Also, good luck to the, um, middle school, uh, as they, they start, uh, their, their track season. That's, um, being a former, uh, middle school track coach many, 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 many moons ago. It, it's, um, it's a, a, a big challenge, and it's often very humorous to see, it's off-time, these kids, it's the first time they've had any organized, any type of organization in terms of running. Uh, usually they get, you know, you down the street, you know, that's race, so we just race. But to, you know, to actually learn how to run and, and the, the aspects of, of running, um, can, um, that, that takes, um, takes a big heart and to, to, to work with, with that, with that, uh, age group of, of kids, particularly when it's their first time, uh, being introduced to any kind of, uh, organized, uh, sports like that. Excuse me. To the, uh, students that may watch this, I don't know how many students watch this, but, you know, you know, a little more than a month and lights are out. So continue to work hard. Uh, if you're a little behind, press a little harder so you can, you know, so you can come up, up to speed. And if you're up to speed, press a little harder so you can push that envelope a, a little higher. To our graduating seniors, uh, the forty-three, hopefully, I don't know if, if anybody, if, if the chance that we can get a couple more, the more the merrier. You know, ninety-one percent sure as heck beats forty-three percent. So we're trending again. Uh, we're trending, uh, in, in the right direction, uh, with, uh, student achievement and graduation rates, uh, in the school district. That's, I stated earlier, um, one of the hardest things that I have to do is laying people off, because we understand that has impact on families' lives. They have their families, and to be told that you no, you no longer have a job, um, is, is disheartening, uh, is defeatist. But we, we don't do it nil, nilly-nilly. Um, we, we, we did it out of necessity, uh, and to right-size our, our district. And another hardest thing for me is expelling, is expelling students, because students belong in school. But it comes to a point that we have to look out for what's best for all of the students and staff, uh, in our, in our school district, and it brings us to the position that we have to expel some students. Uh, it's the hardest thing that I have to do, but, uh, it, it's, you know, we have to do what we have to do, uh, for the organization and, and the betterment of everyone who, involved in the organization. So again, those are two things that I, you know, I don't take lightly. This board does not take lightly as, um, dealing with layoffs and dealing with, uh, student expulsions. Keep your nose to the grindstone, students, and, uh, hey, in six weeks, you know, you'll be free, uh, to run around and do what you need to do. But until then, uh, you know, stay, stay focused, stay dedicated, stay determined, uh, to get the school work done. Thanks to the staff, sports staff, administration for all the hard work and effort that you put in. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Move by Member Walker.
Support.
Second Member Collins. Non-debatable. Call of all plays.
Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at nine oh five PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.